Yes, we'll adjourn the special meeting to go into the work session.
Yep.
One minute, one minute.
The front door is unlocked, right? Okay. Thank you.
Five, four, three, two.
I'll call the City Council Special Meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine.
Here.
Lamore.
Present.
Felder.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Stillgrave.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Present. And our first item is public comment. Let's see if there's any public comment prior to the start of this meeting. Seeing no comment, I'll... Councilman Lamore.
Mr. Honored, make motion to go into closed executive session for the purpose of attorney-client privileged communication.
For.
Motion by Councilman Lamore, motion by Councilwoman Stillgrave to go into closed executive session for attorney-client privileged communication. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lamore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Sure.
There you go.
Okay, everybody's back. We need a motion to go back in.
Motion, go back into open session.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Lamore, support by Councilwoman Germaine. Go back in. Clerk?
Person Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Whitman?
Yes.
Fining?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
I don't think there's anything further on this at this time, so motion adjourned.
Good adjourn.
By Councilman Lamore, support by Councilman Felder. Adjourn the special meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Whitman?
Steelgrave?
Fining?
Mayor Clerk?
Yes. So, for those that may wonder why we have a special meeting with a closed session regarding executive session for attorney-client privilege, we are back. We have a work session, and then we have the city council meeting that starts at 7:30. So, I'll look to see if there's any other clerk. Okay. So, this time, I'll open the work session meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Person Germaine?
Here.
Lamore?
Present.
Felder?
Here.
Whitman?
Here.
Fining?
Here.
Mayor Clerk?
Present.
Next item on that agenda is public comment.
Okay, so we take public comments at the start of the meeting. This is a work session. Our work session, we're having a presentation from the water department on the footing drain disconnection program, but if there's any other comments before we go to the work session agenda and presentation. Any comments from those present here? Seeing none. And of course, as I said, the regular council meeting will start at 7:30, and we'll also have items on the agenda plus a comment at that time. So, next item is...
Under work session agenda, item 4292, wastewater department presentation by Barry Leroy.
Mr. Leroy.
Mayor and Council, Barry Leroy, Director of Water and Wastewater for the city. Here tonight to talk to you about our corrective action plan work regarding wet weather removal, and in particular, the footing drain disconnection program. Just jumping in, we have a corrective action plan, or CAP, that we have been implementing since 2020 within the wastewater system. Just a little bit of history on the removal plan that we've been implementing. We... This is a Department of Eagle, that's our regulator, through our NPDS permit. They required us to evaluate removing clear water from getting into the system so we can certify the system to meet the remedial design storm. We had to look at removal versus increasing system conveyance, like pipe sizes and things like that, or put in additional EQ basins, which are like big storage tanks, so that way we can house it, the flow, while an event's happening. So, the remedial design storm is a 25-year, 24-hour rain event. It's 3.6 inches of rain in a 24-hour period, nothing like what we just went through back in August. There are four... The results of that study we did was four corrective action plan areas. I'll show you those in a minute. In that study, it's targeting specifically like 10% of dry weather flow, which is like when it's really dry out, just water that leaks into the pipes, as well as rain-derived inflow, which are like sump pumps tied in, footing drains, things like that, to remove that. We negotiated with Eagle, a 10-year plan, and it's now in our permit, and we are currently... Well, it's on tonight's agenda on the regular meeting for year four of that program. Again, the goal is to certify the system. That's the entire system, the collection system and the plant. The plant already meets it, but there's areas of the system that we have to further remove clear water. The total cost was about $6.9 million back in 2020, and again, we're on year four right now. This is just a map of the different areas of the system that we have to focus on. The first few years, we've been out in Stony Point in Frenchtown, and then we just finished Mason Run, up by the St. Mary's Garden project. And again, tonight, on the agenda is the next year, the fourth year, which is in the Sunset Boulevard area in Frenchtown. And then the last area is primarily from the W Streets in the city over to Kentucky, primarily south of the river. Those are focused on illicit connections, footing drain disconnection, things of that nature. So, currently, we do have a footing drain disconnection program. It's a voluntary one. It's goal, and just like with any of those types of programs, is to remove clear water from getting into the system, which translates into reducing operating costs and sanitary sewer overflows and litigation and things like that, but it also increases capacity in the system. To qualify, you have to have a footing drain or a clear water connection to the sanitary sewer system. The owner has to fill out an application, as well as sign a waiver, and the reimbursement currently is like $2,500 max, and it's... A portion of that is for the sump pump, and then what's called a backwater valve is the other portion, which is kind of protecting your house from any backflows coming back in from the system. The contractors currently install it and then pull any necessary permits, and then we just have to verify, like the discharge, and that it's physically disconnected. To date, it's, again, it's a voluntary program. It hasn't been highly successful, even though we've really promoted it. There's only been 14 of them completed in the system. This is a list of studies that we've been evaluating inflow and infiltration from removing it from the system, going back to the 1979 sanitary sewer evaluation system. There's quite a bit of detail in there, so I'm not going to go too long on all that, but the first bullet on this slide talks about the same things I already mentioned with the targets of removal. That's what our current efforts are to certify the system. We have moved to 100% funding of the CAP areas, and so like St. Mary's Gardens, we've already completed six footing drain disconnections, and we're funding it with system cost at this point because we're looking at getting the clear water out directly and getting the benefit, as well as helping customers and residents protect their houses, as well as completing the task, connecting them to the sewer leads that have been provided. Some interesting information regarding from these studies are that the inflow that comes And the rest of it comes in through pipes and throughout the system. But in every one of these studies, it's always indicated that it's not cost-effective. There are over 7,400 footing drains that are connected into the system. That's been estimated. And, but you know, we need to field verify those, so that's why we go through some pre-inspection to verify that information. But the flows that can contribute, additional flows to the system during a rain event is like up to 88 million gallons a day. So just in comparison, the plant can treat up to 50 million gallons a day, and then we have to store the rest. So this exceeds the plant's capacity, if you think of it in those terms. We have some field verification on these flows, but typically footing drains can, on a small rain event, can range from zero to five gallons a minute, or a larger event can be two to five gallons a minute. To fully fund all 7,400 of them, which I would be shocked if we had that many, but we would need to field verify those, is about $45 million. And then, then there's infrastructure costs that are needed. So you need storm sewers and other ways to convey that water as you're removing it. So the combined cost of that, as well as footing drains, is about $130 million. So here's some reports that I had listed, just because this has been a problem for a long time in our area. In 1915, there was a Michigan State Board of Health report, because the prior few years to that point, there was a typhoid fever epidemic in Monroe County. And so they came down and evaluated and investigated several things. And one thing they looked at was hygiene, and most of the, most of them were outhouses back then. And, but there was a lot of folks that had sewer line just running to like an open ditch, which went to the river. And they were all combined. So like every time it would rain, it would back up into people's houses. And that was one of the first things that they recommended was to separate those lines, okay? Separate sanitary from clear water from backing up into the system. Now, fast forwarding to 1935, that's the first regulation booklet that the city published regarding like the water system, and then it had information on sewers, even though the sewer system wasn't even built until 1936. But it clearly defined prohibited connections of having clear water connections getting into the sewer system, even though that we didn't even have a plan at the time, just because they knew it was non-hygiene to have that. Now, moving forward to 1972, that's actually when the plumbing code required a separate connection for clear water discharges, like footing drain water getting into the sanitary. So previous to then, it was allowed to allow footing drains to be connected to the sanitary sewer system, which is most of what our housing stock is in the city. We do have some ordinances, 570-5, which talks about prohibited connections. So it's not allowed to connect footing drains to the sewer system. For the houses that are connected, there are limits on what's allowed, and so like 200 gallons in a 24-hour period is like the maximum that's allowed to be connected, and then it's supposed to be removed. I don't think we've ever enforced that correctly, but you know, we're trying to remove it on our own now, just because we have to certify the system. There's a couple of other regulations that we have in our ordinances. We took some measures by not allowing gravity sewers in the basement, so that way, there's not the, so if you have a floor drain in your basement, and it's a newer house, it's likely tied into the sump pump, it's not going into the gravity sewer. So that's one of the requirements that we made back in the year 2000. And then there's backwater valves, where that's an approved method in the plumbing code that will give you the best chance possible not having like a backup in your house. Some further elements as far as cost, so like our master agreement with, between the city, Frenchtown and Monroe Township, it talks about routine maintenance, heavy maintenance, repair and replacement. And it's to be paid for essentially by the system's fees collected. Removing clear water from the system is a justified cost for using this. It's just pointing that information out. And then weather capacity, because capacity, we need that to continue to grow our system and our community. The city, Frenchtown and Monroe Township, weather capacity really inhibits us, because if, if you remember, you know, footing drain just, footing drain capacity can exceed the plant capacity just on its own from some of these studies we've had. It moves up relatively, so, but no one gets more or less capacity. So it really benefits us to remove it, to keep it, keep it down. And then this last bullet I wanted to point out, there's the City of Durand in Michigan started a program back in 2003, and they carefully monitored this, so this, these numbers are definitely justified. They removed 107 footing drains, and it ended up removing 130,000 gallons per day at their plant. That turned, that's just under one gallon per minute of removal. But when you back into like how many new connections that can provide the system, that's about, for every 1,000 footing drains you remove, it's about 1,200 new connections you can make. So it definitely pays for itself in the long run by removing operating costs and allowing new connections to happen. Okay, so at this point, I wanted to point out, we're recommending to kind of expand our footing drain disconnection program to be system-funded for customers that qualify. It would be in all areas of the system, so in all units of government. So the city, Frenchtown and Monroe Township would be first come, first served, and our CAP areas would be prioritized first. We currently have a line item in our budget. It's $200,000, which we are calculating about 30 to 50 footing drains could be done just with that. And then we would include it in our future budgets. It would be the same factor as the qualify of having your footing drains tied in or a clear water source connecting to the system. And then our staff would have to go field verify it by TV, do a TV work and dye testing. Once it's field verified, we, the city would then hire our own contractors, which is what we've been doing up in St. Mary's Gardens. And we would be hiring them to do the separation or backwater valve, or in some cases, if somebody's sump pumps tied in illegally, we would reroute that to the proper location. Because in all cases, the clear water is being removed from the system, and that's a prohibited connection at any rate. We would have the contractor pull the necessary permits that are needed for plumbing and electrical. I've already been working with Lauren in the building department on that. And we would just need to field verify the discharge location. We would go utilize all the existing infrastructure we have available. And then I've been coordinating with Patrick Lewis on future road projects for putting in basic stormwater infrastructure systems to allow us to connect to as we go along with this program. We are working with Terry Davis on, in our IT department with an online application, which also has the waiver release form for the owner to sign. And as I pointed out, prohibited connections would be allowed in this program. And I'll work with our communications on education, advertising, and including in newsletters. We would probably be reaching out to prior claimants of the system that we've had some, some claims in the past to kind of help mitigate that. All right, so here's, here's a few pictures just to explain some of all this information I've been sharing. The picture on the left here is a basement cross-section, so like here's your basement wall, this is the first floor, and then like in your basement, you would have a floor drain. This particular house has like the footing drains on the outside of the house and then routes into the sanitary sewer. What would happen is the contractor, in this case, would cut in a sump pump in the basement floor and tie in the footing drains to it, and then route it out to the proper discharge location. One thing I want to point out is if you don't use your floor drains, we highly recommend you plug them off or get rid of them. There's some very inexpensive ways to do that. And we would recommend that they do that, just to help protect themselves. Here are some pictures of an actual footing drain disconnection. And picture number one here, this is the footing drain line that's already been removed, where it was tied into the sanitary sewer. This is the crossover location. This is a cleanout here, and a cleanout on the sanitary line portion of the house where your sewage goes. If you go to picture number two, they routed it to this direction here, and if you go to picture three, there's a sump pump over there. So they routed it under the floor over to the sump pump. This is just the process, but you really have to do a little investigative work to find these locations to put the best scenario in for the homeowner. So this is just one actual example that, in our system, that has happened. This, excuse me, slide is just outlining the different types of sump pump setups and discharge locations. Some of these pictures are, like this one here is from St. Mary's Garden, just connecting to the sewer lead that was provided. This picture here is discharging to a French drain, so if you're, a lot of terms, that's what this stuff means. The, we would tap infrastructure that's already there, so these are just a variety of taps, what those look like. This is a backwater valve slide in this picture up here where the house is. The backwater valve can go in the house or outside of the house. And the middle picture here is a, one that's in a basement floor. And the picture over here on the right is one that would, kind of looks like a cleanout, but it's on the outside of the house. And the key to these are keeping debris from collecting on these flappers that if water does come back from the public main towards your house, it would, just gotta make sure it seals off. So just a little bit of maintenance with those, but they, they work fabulously. Okay, so this slide here is just showing you, we're gonna be putting on the city website a web link that, it works here. Here it is. Okay. So this is just the online application form. It's some basic information, name information, address, contact information. They pick which eligible work that they desire. There's some general information on the program on this hyperlink here. And then there's, this is the release waiver page that they're required to review, check off, and then sign and submit. And then from there, we have a workflow set up with staff using Laserfish forms internally to complete the work. And with that, is there any questions?
Thanks, Barry. Any questions from council? Let's, I'll start this way and go down.
Barry, is this gonna be a similar application to the lead pipe disconnection on the houses that we have in Monroe?
As far as system-wide, yes, it can be, yes.
So two separate applications have to be made?
Yes, this is on the wastewater side, yeah. This would be a separate one, yep.
Right.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had some problems, obviously, in August because of the large rainfall we had. Could this be one of the problems that were occurring in a lot of the homeowners' basements because they were still connected with their foot drain? Or what would you have an explanation for that?
Right, so the August event was, you heard me make a comment on the remedial design storm, that rain event exceeded above and beyond what the system's able to handle. But that's what that event is. Yes, and I highly promote protecting yourself. So getting rid of your floor drains, as well as a backwater valve, would help in those cases. The benefit to participate with this program is that the system has, we have to get clear water out of the system. So to qualify, they would first have to have that as well. So they would have to have a footing drain tied in or some type of clear water source getting into the system where we can remove it to qualify to be part of that program. But it's definitely contributing to the problem. I'm not saying that's 100%. The footing drains didn't cause all of that, but it was 43% is what some of those past studies have shown is getting into the system, so.
So would you say that majority, or a good portion of the homes that were located in the St. Mary's Gardens area, or Lavender, that area, which a lot of them had flooding issues, had some problems with the footing drain?
Yes, those, those houses are all pre-1972, so they all fall into that older category with footing drains tied in.
Perfect, thank you.
Andrew?
Some of the recent state and local ordinances, I say recent, 1972, make building houses in this, in this manner with footing drains illegal. They can't do that anymore. Is it safe to assume that anyone with a house after that date is, is, can they safely assume that they're compliant?
I would make that assumption, yes, but I mean, it's, we've been surprised before.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have an estimate, you guys have an estimate, of, what'd you say, 7,800?
From the 2000, 2000 study roughly, it was like 7,400 is what they estimated, based on the housing age, yes.
Do we know the participants within the system that we expect to have footing drains? Do we know addresses?
Yes, we could get that information, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
Have we sent out mailers of, hey, you are eligible for this program, we would like to disconnect your footing drain and install a sump pump? And by the way, there's money to help you do this, and if you don't want the money, then here's the ordinance that says it's your, it's at your cost and expense anyway.
I mean, this is still a voluntary program. We haven't got that far because we wanted to present at the city council first, because we're just starting this, and we're focusing on the CAP areas, but we were proposing to expand it. So we already have a lot of outside customers that are interested in this that fall into that category that you're referring to. So yeah, we would work with our communication department to develop information for sharing that they would qualify for that. And it's, it is a prohibited connection, but if their housing is before the plumbing code, it's actually grandfathered in, I guess you want to use those terms, so.
Okay. They're paying for the wastewater discharge. You have a water bill and a wastewater bill, assuming they're connected to the sanitary sewer. So they're paying for the wastewater that comes out, right?
Yes.
Even if it's clear water?
Yeah, that's additional cost the system has to pay for to treat it, because we still have to meet a standard with our NPDS permit. So the lower the amount we have to treat, the more money we'll save with that, too.
And so we could estimate what households or businesses or properties have these versus not by looking at, you know, does your wastewater usage essentially match your water usage, or is it much larger, especially in heavy rain events?
So one of the metrics we use for during budget, and I usually present this at the wastewater control board, is one of the items, and I think it may have, as well as city council, we have a metric we track for billable versus what we treat. And typically, we're in the 2.5 to 3 range of what we treat versus what we bill. So our goal is to get that to one-to-one, which is an ideal. So if you, we bill for, you know, 1,000 units, we should be only treating 1,000 units. But multiply that by 2.5 to 3, and that's typically what we're treating, from infiltration, for example.
Why don't we bill for the other units?
Well, what I'm getting at is it's billed off based off of water meter usage. So we have to bill based on water meter usage. I'm just, when the usage comes into the plant, we're actually tracking, we have to meter what's coming in and what's going out. But we're metering coming in as much higher. It's still built into your rate for what you're getting billed, but it's, I'm just telling, it's a higher volume.
Does that, do we have tie-ins to the sanitary sewer after the reader, then? Is that the issue there?
No, no, it's nothing like that. Yeah, we don't meter like each individual house usage going out. It's based on your water meter, water coming in.
Okay.
Other questions? You know, I, over the years, it just, this conversation comes up periodically. I know that there's been, information has gone out with communications bills, presentations about disconnect. And it seems like every, when we have a significant event, you know, some of this can be resolved. Obviously, the most recent one was very significant, that it probably did contribute. But it's, it's the regular time in which it could be, have any separation, and participating in this would, would minimize, well, should eliminate, having the backups and... But the point is that the more we send discharge into the plant, it's clear water still has to be processed, which costs more money and it costs more time. But also, there's a capacity, and the plant can only take certain capacity, and even adding the additional retention facility that we had there to hold before it gets treated. And that has been overrun before. So it's really advantageous for the residents to take this opportunity and see that, you know, you can be funding to prevent water and sewage coming back into your home. It's, it is a prevention. So hopefully, this will get off the ground, that there'll get more participants than what we've had in the past. There's no other questions? Oh, Michelle?
Is this on the website now for citizens to apply for if they want to, or is it coming?
It'll be this week, probably tomorrow.
Very good. Thanks, Barry.
Yep.
I think we have one more item, clerk?
We do. We have item 4291, which is a professional development.
We have 4291, professional development update.
Yes, Your Honor, Dr. Everly has some...
Yes, Your Honor, Dr. Everly has some positive news about some, some achievements that members of our staff have achieved over the past year in being involved in their own professional environment, or development.
I do, thank you. Honorable Mayor, Council, Clerk LaVoy, Julie Everly, the Director of Human Resources. And I have the pleasure to talk with you, thank you, the pleasure to talk with you tonight about some accomplishments of our staff. I always say that I feel like the luckiest person in the whole city, because I get to work with every single department, every single administrator, every single staff member. And one of the most important things we can do as an organization is invest in our people, so then they invest in those around them, and then they are able to invest in our citizens to do all the hard work that Director LaVoy, LaRoy was just talking about, and all the hard work that happens every day here. So one of the things I wanted to connect with what we're going to talk about tonight is, we, we talk about professional development and the training of our staff, but really, professional development ties to a much broader picture of organizational development. And we use, when we plan our professional development, we use consistently your goals and objectives as a council to decide what our next steps are going to be. So when we talk about and highlight some of the professional development that we're going to tonight, we're really focused in on Goal F, that you have specifically objectives 2, 3, and 4, that you can see on the screen there. But make no mistake that although those specific objectives really speak to professional development, because we touched the entire staff here in the city, 186 people to be exact, that investment in them reaches all of your objective areas. So when you think of your role as the policy setters and your, what you approve at every one of our meetings here, and the projects that you discuss, our staff really sets those wheels in motion, and this investment in them helps them to, to do that in a more effective and more efficient way. So I couldn't possibly highlight all of the professional development that we have moving along here, but I definitely want to highlight some of the key newest pieces that we have. So when we think about our professional development, one of the things that we know in an organization is that when we invest in our people, they tend to be more engaged, they tend to stay in an organization longer, they tend to enjoy work more. So we look at all of the different ways that we want to help them grow and learn. And once we've done that and maintained committed to it, it really does shift the organizational culture. And I noticed, and we've had a lot of discussion, that one of your goals and objectives is to improve the customer experience. And there is much that suggests in big companies, small businesses, organizations that are nonprofits, much that suggests that, you know, whatever's happening with the people inside of the organization is reflected in the service they provide to those outside of the organization. So by making this investment internally into our staff, we're also getting to that goal of customer service. So we've had a variety of professional development opportunities over the last, we've highlighted the, about the last year here for you. We've had opportunities that are by invitation, we have opportunities that are required for all staff, and we have some specialized opportunities that are, are really aligned with a staff member's role and responsibility. For instance, we have, OSHA often puts on trainings that might be targeted at forestry or wastewater, so the appropriate staff would be aligned with those trainings. We also wanna highlight, a couple of these trainings involve the invitation that was extended not only to our staff, but to their family or community members who are, who are close to them. And a good example of that that just happened, we are, we have the Know Before, it was Cybersecurity Month this month, and the Know Before Partner that we have often sends us videos and resources to share, and it was encouraged to share those with any, anyone in our family who might find that interesting or helpful. So these are just a few of the trainings that city staff have participated in this year. I would also like to highlight on this list, something that was a first for us. We had 150, over 150 employees and retirees attend our wellness fair. And you probably saw the communications on that. We had 17 of our health vendors come in and set up a table where employees could move about as their needs, as their needs merited, where they could ask questions about their own healthcare, ask questions about their benefits for themselves, for their families. And we were very, very pleasantly surprised to see the event attended well by employees and also by our retirees. So we look forward to continuing that as an annual tradition here. Some of the tables had, were more question and answer based, others actually had small presentations prepared based upon what they saw in the data from our city workers' use of their benefits. So it was a very data-driven process that they, they had there. So I mentioned that those partners who attended the wellness fair, but I did wanna mention, when we talk about professional development, this slide doesn't even begin to touch the number of organizations who are partnered with the various departments across the city to, for professional membership, for professional collaboration, professional learning. Many of these organizations host conferences in which our employees and administration attend. Some of you have attended conferences hosted by these organizations. And we have really started to have question, question and answer sessions with employees at the evaluation level about what is, what is your interest in, in becoming a member of some of these professional organizations? How could your work benefit from involvement with them? And, you know, we do have some advanced involvement in many of these, we've had people serve on committees, people who have served in different task force efforts here. We actually, coming up very soon, we're, actually tomorrow, some of our members here in the city, and I believe Councilperson Jermaine, they'll be going to the MML conference, at which time, a great example of what we're talking about here is Honorable Mayor will be named as the President of MML for the upcoming year. So a great example of how our involvement in these organizations not only benefits our learning here with the city, but it's a very much a back and forth investment where we can bring information in, and then we can also share information. And Monroe has a seat at the table when it comes to these nationwide, and in some cases, international conversations. So a couple of the efforts that we have happening that I wanted to mention tonight, we have started a, a rolling cohort of seats in the ICMA Leadership Academy. So this is really exciting. Actually learned about this academy from Director Cochran. He had been through the academy, thanks to the investment of the city some time ago. And in working with the reps at ICMA and collaborating with them, we were able to make an arrangement of cost reduction and have five, a cohort of five people, attend the ICMA Academy that launched in July. And the first cohort, we're celebrating them because they're almost ready to graduate, November 3rd is their graduation day. So we have Michelle LaVoy, Kessie McLeod, Matt Vanasacker, Jamie Wyerich, and Amy Zarin, who have participated in this, and thought we would benefit from having them be part of the presentation, too. So we have a little video here, so you could learn about it.
Hi, I'm Matt Vanasacker, Deputy Director of Economic and Community Development and Neighborhood Services Coordinator. Been with the city since March. I'm very excited to be a part of this program. It's really helped in a lot of ways, being new and being able to learn a little bit about the, the culture here in the city, and also ways that we can, we can expand and extend it to create the highest quality of life for our residents that we can. So learned a lot in this program, everything from leadership traits to communication styles, knowing that everyone, regardless of whether they're in, they're in a leadership tier or not, all play a role and all possess leadership skills. And the ways to tap into those skills and get the most out of everyone has been really rewarding for me.
Hi, I'm Amy Zarin, I am the Economic Development and Authorities Coordinator. I've been with the city since May, actually, and I really appreciate it to be part of this program. It is led a majority by Colin Powell, and his leadership style is admirable. I love the 13 leadership qualities that he shares, as well as having an oath, a leadership oath, and that's something that both Matt and I and the other participants in this program are really working on, is what is our leadership oath? And happy to be part of this, thank you for the opportunity.
So a human resources director's dream is when, after you send people to something like this, they want to bring a piece of it back and share it with a lot of other people. So Clerk LaVoy called me a few weeks ago, and she said, hey, I have this idea. And I'm going to let her share what, what the next steps are going to be.
So, and actually, it's just another example of collaboration. So I did have this idea, there, in addition to Colin Powell's 13, 13 Rules of Leadership, there is also, there are also a number of books, because we're hearing throughout this, this leadership course from government leaders, as well as business leaders. So it's a nice mix, especially when you're in the government sector, I think, to hear both from business and government and see how it can be applied. But in doing so, many of those leaders have written fabulous books, and, and some of the segments we study are excerpts from those books. So I went, I went to Julie, and I, well, I actually went, we started talking among the group, I brought it to the group first, and, and said, you know, maybe, maybe we need some kind of book club, because I don't know about you, but I wanna read Powell's book, I wanna read so-and-so's book. And then, so we kind of all agreed that that might not be a bad idea, and I took it to Julie, and Julie, who's always looking for another way to kind of branch out, said, you know, we could really do this with everybody, you know? Because my idea was, let's have, can, will HR invest in the books and have the books available so folks could check them out and read it? And she's like, no, let's do a book club. And I was like, let's do a book club, that's fabulous. So we're gonna launch that, and it'll be, it'll, just won't be folks who are currently in the leadership class or tapped to be in future leadership classes, but it would be available to, to everybody. And I do wanna make one more plug, what I have found invaluable in addition to what, what you heard in the video, for me personally and for Jamie, we're in this together. And that's been really great, because we can reinforce what we're hearing and have discussions about it and what works and what doesn't. And then we've already started applying it with the rest of the staff in our office, sharing it. Jamie came to me and I thought it was a fabulous idea. We do a morning huddle every day with the team for about five minutes, and she said, what if once a week, or once every couple of weeks, I, I bring in one of the Colin Powell's leadership rules, and we just talk about it a little bit, and see, you know, we'll see what we all think about it, that sort of thing. And then, so, so already, it's paying dividends. It's not only for those folks that are in the class, we're already using it with our whole team, and it's been great.
Thank you. So we listen for, oops, we listen for that spread of the ideas. So the other example we wanted to bring forward tonight is the example where 100% of our city staff was trained on active intruder training. So under the direction of Director Chad Tolstead, he led the city staff through a quite extensive training, and the training was videoed so that as we onboard our new employees, we can maintain that level of 100%. But equally is important to the training is just really the departments were mixed in the training, so everyone got to learn from not only people in their own department, but people from across the city. And the way the training came to us was created when Director Tolstead was sent to the FBI Academy, and that was a city training. So again, similar to what Clerk LaVoy, the example that Clerk LaVoy just gave to us, that idea of one person being trained and really spreading it out to others. So Director Tolstead, would you like to make any comments about that training that was back before you were a director?
Yeah, sure. Chad Tolstead, Director of Public Safety, Senator Monroe, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Clerk LaVoy. Dr. Everly's right, so some years ago, I got sent to that specific type training to do active shooter training, and as a part of that, the expectation was, when I came back, was to train staff members. Also, I had the opportunity to train other, many other businesses here in the city of Monroe as well. I know we just were at LET as well, not me personally, I had to send in the B-team, I'm kidding. Commander Wallwitten did that for me. But we've been able to take that training and bring it back, and, and speak to the culture Dr. Everly's trying to bring into the city is excellent. Some of the things, when we would, I would send officers out to training, they'd come back, I'm like, okay, tell me about the training, like, oh, I have to like do something? I'm like, yes, you have to, we wanna bring this training, we just spent all this money on and all this time on, let's bring it back and, and bring it back to other officers. So, so really encouraged by this type of culture and what we're trying to bring forth here.
Thank you, Director. And this is one of our wastewater employees.
Hello, my name's Scott Callaway, and I am the Collection Supervisor for the City of Monroe. I handle all the gravity sewers in town, and anybody that has a sewer issue in Monroe uses running to me at some point. But I was asked to see what I thought of the ALIS training that we had, and I thought it was pretty good. A lot of it, to me, I had understood that and had some training in the past with that type of stuff, and I believe that I would react in a good way, first get out of there, but then also help if I could. And, but what I found that surprised me was that the Jason Aldean concert incident, that where they, the guy fired 11,000 rounds in three minutes? That, that's, that's crazy. And I'm, I like guns, and I have guns, and I like to honk stuff like that. To me, it just, that just seems crazy to me, but true. What was the other thing that I looked, oh, I was, I was kinda surprised by the denial that people have of, of the, of situation happening, because if you hear something, I mean, why would you question that? If you think that's what it is, you should react to it first, and then, you know, if it wasn't a gunshot or something bad happened, well, then great, at least you protected yourself and you let people around you know what happened. So it's always better to be safe than sorry. But other than that, I think that was kinda, you know, what I thought, it's a great thing to have, and I'm glad we were able to. It's a great thing to have, and I'm glad I was able to be part of it. Hello, my name's Scott Callaway, and I am...
So I'll leave you with the most current staff survey that we did in late July. We had 117 responses to it. It was a voluntary survey. So 86.4% of our employees indicated that they have opportunities to grow and learn. So we intend to continue to check in on that, continue to invest and find out what the needs are. And we hope that this update, we look forward to giving you another update too, as time goes on. So thank you very much, and entertain any questions.
Thanks, Dr. Everly. Any questions? We have a couple of minutes, if there's any questions. Obviously, that Dr. Everly, and if you have follow-ups, is always available if you wanted to have conversations about some of the other programs that were in training that was provided and how we move forward. You know, Dr. Everly is correct. I think about the, I look here, and I know that some of the council members attended the MML Newly Elected Officials. There's also different levels you can go past there. We have a member that went to training for the Pension Board and received certification from that. It's just learning what we as council members, not as our employees, but also our boards and commissions, training through the CPC, the Brown Field of Development, the zoning board, all of this is important. So I really appreciate the efforts, not only making our staff, but our community better. So thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we have about three minutes, two minutes now for the meeting.
Nothing else from the administration during the work session.
Okay. So I think at this time, we'll close the work session. We have a couple of minutes before the meeting starts, so if you need to get up or take care of something, now's the time. Call the City Council meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Here. Lomore. Felder. Whitman.
Here.
Stillgrave.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Mayor Clark.
Present. As we all please rise for the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are grateful for the great resources of this land and for the freedom which has been its heritage. Inspire our city officials to serve with fairness, humility, and integrity, and to work for the welfare of this community and all its citizens.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, first item, please.
The first item is the approval of the regular agenda.
Mr. Robinson, any adjustments or amendments from the administration?
The administration has no adjustments at this time.
Any comments from council? It's not a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion by Councilwoman Moore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, to approve the regular agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Lomore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
I didn't get in here quick enough before the motion was made. I wanted to see about adding something, I had a question. Add to the regular agenda. You hear me?
I can hear you. What?
I didn't realize we were at that part of the agenda. But I had a question. I was looking, I had a question about the 212 East First Street building. And I don't know if I could get that added to the agenda to have a discussion.
Is it something you're looking for action on? Like a motion to...
We don't want to make a motion on that.
Mr. Buds, we're halfway through the vote. I guess you could vote no. But what do we do?
I will confess, I don't recall where we were at in the voting process. I know that there had been a motion, a support, and I think that we had made...
Five votes so far.
Councilperson Vining was next to vote.
My suggestion would be, just based on the timing of that, that that vote needs to go forward. And then certainly, at any point, someone could make a motion to add an item to the agenda if there's support for that immediately following. So it will be a little awkward, but I think that's the necessary course to follow at this point.
No, clerk?
Yes.
Okay, so I vote no on that.
And then Mayor Clark.
Yes.
All right.
So, Mr. Buds, before we go into the consent agenda, and I think back in time, it's coming through the council comments, and that's probably not the best place, is at the end of a meeting for motions. So are you, I guess you're saying that anybody could add something to, it's not on the agenda right now, but it could be brought forward, a request to have something added as a council action item? I mean, we've passed that, but go ahead.
So I would defer to what the person that would ultimately make the motion might want to seek. If it's going to be an action item, I would say typically, our approach would be that those be added to the agenda. Given that it was raised at the time of the vote, I would support the idea of hearing a motion. Now, at this point, if there's any suggested or requested changes to the agenda, if Mayor yourself, as the chair, is willing to entertain those, I think that would be appropriate. Of course, a councilperson can always make a motion at any point before the conclusion of the meeting. Also, I guess for my purposes, it probably makes better order and sense if it's added as an agenda item. But I would also understand if there are those that feel the agenda has already been approved, and we should move forward with it as it was approved.
So if I hear you correctly, it could be done, it could be done now. And of course, if a council member and gets support to put it on the agenda, but we don't know what the topic's going to be about, so we'd have to then make a motion later, if that's whatever the person, a council member wants to put forward, is probably for an action item. And then council can vote whether to support that or not. It's really two things the council can support. They could move forward and say, we're not going to not put it on the agenda, or you can put it on the agenda, just not entertain the vote, I guess. I'm not sure what it's about. So I'm just kind of, I know the property, I know what it's about, but I don't know what the request is going to be.
Correct, I will say. I don't know that either. So I think that there could be a motion to ask for an item to be added to the agenda as a late addition following the approval of the agenda, or that item can not be brought forward now, and anyone could make a motion that they seek at any point in time during the remainder of the course of the meeting.
So I think we have, we've approved the regular agenda. I'll just, I'll entertain it. Is there a motion to add an item to the agenda that's currently not on the agenda? And at what location within the agenda would it be requested for? Any motions?
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we add an item to the agenda to... Now, do I need to, do I need, if I want to have a discussion about the item, do I need to put that into the motion at this time? Or...
If I may.
Yes.
So I think that the appropriate way would be, if we're going to have a motion on adding an agenda item to indicate the substance matter and where it should occur in the agenda. If it's going to be under council action, then I think it should be added in that section, simply with a, I'll say, a title or heading the subject matter. And then when we get to that time in the agenda, then that can obviously be discussed as to what was proposed by adding that to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion and add it to the council action that we... That we make a decision, one way or the other, concerning the proposals that have already been presented to the city concerning the property at 212 East First Street. So I guess that will go under council action.
Okay, there's a motion, if I have it correct, that there would be a decision made to the proposals already submitted to the city council regarding 212 East Front Street. Is that correct? And be placed under council action?
Yes.
Pardon me? Oh, East, East Front Street. Right? Okay. There's a motion, and it will need to be seconded to take a vote. There's a motion to second?
Just to be clear, this is a motion to add the item to the agenda, not to actually take any action. At this time, the motion is to add to the agenda.
Correct. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine.
Yes.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Stillgrave.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
No.
So it's 6-1, so it'll appear under the council action. It'll have to have a number added later. Clerk, next item, please.
So the next item is the consent agenda. And under Item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $2,282,611.65, 2282611.65.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda council wishes to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, are there any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening? I'm sorry, Councilman Felder, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand.
4287, sir.
I'm sorry, which one?
4287.
4287. Thank you. My apologies. Other items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Any items on the consent agenda? Motion. Councilman Felder.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that all items not pulled for further discussion on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
It's my Councilman Felder, supported by Councilwoman Lomore, that all items on the consent agenda not pulled for further discussion be accepted, placed on file, and recommendations carried out. Clerk, please call the roll.
Germaine.
Yes.
Lomore.
Yes.
Felder.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Mayor Clark.
Yes.
So the next item is under council action. Item 4289, Retiree Healthcare Plan Resolution and Amendment.
Mr. Robinson.
Just quickly to explain this, is back in, on July 5th, 2022, the council action to allow retirees from the COMEA 1 and COMEA 2 and the Police Command Officers Group to become eligible to, if they did not participate, if they chose not to participate in the healthcare coverage under the plan, to receive a return of their employee contributions plus accumulated interest. That was allowed by city council back in 2022 for those three bargaining groups. While we have now been approached by the local Teamsters 214, who are interested in also participating in that program the way that COMEA 1 and COMEA 2 and the Police Command Officers did back in 2022, it is our recommendation that we allow this to happen. During this conversation, Dr. Everly also spoke to the other two bargaining groups that are remaining, and neither of those groups were interested in participation at this time. So we are asking you to approve the resolution and amendment to the City of Monroe, Michigan Retiree Healthcare Plan, effective October 1st, 2022, as it was attached.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Robinson on Item 4289? None, motion be in order.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve the resolution in 2023-1 Amendment to the City of Monroe, Michigan Retiree Healthcare Plan, effective October 1st... October 1st, 2022, as attached.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamoore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine, item 80, I'm sorry, 4289, the Retiree Healthcare Plan Resolution and Amendment. Clerk, please call the roll.
Vining?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder? Whitman?
Yes.
Stilgrave? Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
The next item is item 4278, Termination of Fox Trails Condominium Project.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, Your Honor and Council, I'd like to ask Director Cochran to, to come to the podium to explain uh, the circumstances regarding the termination of this condominium project.
Honorable Mayor, Council, Mark Cochran, Director of Economic and Community Development. This evening, we're bringing forth before you, uh, for your approval, uh, a recommendation to terminate the condominium project at Fox Trail. Um, a map of the property was included in your packet this evening. This is uh, some of the property just to the west of, or just to the east of Mason, or Munson Park, connected to uh, Frenchman's Ben. This was a condominium project that was proposed by a developer way back in 2006. Um, they had gone all the way through uh, the planning commission, and then uh, the bottom fell out in the market in 2008, as we all know, and the project has not moved forward. Um, master deed was filed on the property uh, that laid out the con, the site condominium project that called for um, a good number, about 170 single-family homes on the entire parcel. At the time, the, the properties were one parcel, however, the, the site condominium was only filed on a portion of that property, which is uh, the property that's shown in your packet this evening. The parcel was later split up. Um, the property was recently purchased, uh, recently in the past couple of years by Andre Satilli, uh, who is farming the property. He does not intend to complete the site condominium development and the neighborhood development. In fact, he's building his own house on a portion of the parcel, the original parcel to the north. Um, and so the bylaws and the agreement with the site condominium project require city council to approve in writing the termination of the original site condominium master deed. Um, we saw no objection in, from the city administration standpoint with doing so. If uh, after farming is done, or if there is a new buyer and they wish to develop the property, they're gonna have to start the process all over again anyway. Um, and so we saw no harm, no foul, in going ahead with the termination of this particular site condominium. Certainly not something we do frequently, and that's why it's on council action this evening.
Any questions from council for Mr. Cochran? Councilman Felder?
Yes, Mr. Cochran, you, you went into briefly about why the change ended up happening. The developer purchased the property with the anticipation of building single-family residences on it, and then, you know, finances and economics happened, and we have what we have. Um, was it Mr. Satilli that purchased the property, and was he the developer initially on this project?
No, it was um, it was a developer that's no longer a business, that purchased it in 2006. It's actually changed hands several times since the original developer.
And so as I'm scrambling to find the map in the agenda, this isn't the in, the, the proposed development, one of those parcels is currently being uh, occupied by Mr. Satilli, who's developing his, his home on the property, is developing the property. Um, how much space is left that is developable by a future development?
Uh, technically, uh, besides his residential parcel, it could always be parceled out or divided in the future. Um, I don't know outside of his residential development, because that's not the parcel that's in question this evening. It's only the one single parcel that was actually part of the site condominium. Um, so it'd be both of the parcels, north of this parcel, that I guess could be developed in the future, but.
Okay. Um, do we have any idea as to the tax-based disparity between the initial project and where we are now?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilwoman Vining?
Mr. Cochran, when you say um, this is not something that we normally do, do you mean we don't normally terminate these master deeds, or people don't normally request to have them terminated?
Yeah, we, we haven't had one of these come before us in quite some time to terminate the master deed in and of itself. Um, the master deed, I mean, one we recently dealt with uh, was Mason Run. Uh, with the update of the PUD, that has a master deed associated with it, so. Just the termination, we haven't brought one recently, so that's why we didn't want to put it on the consent agenda tonight, to give it a little more thorough explanation.
Are there, are there usually um, some type of consequences? I, I don't wanna really use that word, written into the um, contract for termination? No? Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Cochran? Very well. Uh, Councilwoman Germaine?
Motion, Your Honor? Item number 4278, Move to Adopt the Resolution Approving the Termination of the Site Condominium Master Deed for Fox Trails Phase 1.
Motion by Councilwoman Germaine, supported by Councilwoman Stilgrave on item 4278, the termination of the Fox Trails condominium project. Clerk, please call the roll.
Germaine?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder? Whitman? Stilgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
The next item is item 4286, Authorization to Submit Grant Application to Mishta Neighborhood Enhancement Program.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, Your Honor, the, the, the City of Monroe, we're submitting a grant application for funding an amount of $75,000 from the Mishta Neighborhood Enhancement Program, NEP. The, the proposed grant, the, the proposed grant funds would support single-family exterior home repairs in the Orchard East neighborhood to assist property owners with blight, elimination, and property maintenance concerns. Furthermore, the application includes six, or site improvements to the Selma-Rankins community guarding, including a perimeter fence. The maximum amount a community can apply for is $75,000, and there is no local match requirement. So we're recommend, we're recommending the city council uh, grants our authorization for the Economic and Development uh, Department to submit for the Michigan Neighborhood Enhancement Program grant application and adopt a resolution to support.
Councilwoman Vining?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I'll see if there's any comments for the administration. Uh, Councilman Felder, and then we'll go back to Councilwoman.
Just a uh, quick uh, question before we end up moving to a motion. I think this is a wonderful project that the uh, Community and Economic Development Department put together. Um, I really like the vision of what it's trying to accomplish and how it affects um, the residents uh, individually almost. I do have a question about the application, if the grant is awarded, how are the funds gonna be distributed? Um, and are the residents gonna apply, and what's that format look like?
Director Cochran, would you like to answer that?
Sure. So as city council knows, currently through our Community Development Block Grant Program, we have a fixed program that's administered through MCOOP. Um, residents can apply for funds, uh, meeting certain, certain eligibility requirements through the federal grants. Um, it would much be the same for the circumstance as well, um, in application process, it would probably be streamlined uh, as well with the fixed program. And also, uh, Caitlin Briarty is in the audience tonight, our uh, Grants Coordinator in our department. She's actually the one who, of course, administers our CDBG program and the fixed program, and she'll also uh, be submitting the application and working on this project as well, if, if awarded. So there would be an application process, and we would have to review eligibility criteria.
So there would be, the grant would be administered by MCOOP, is my understanding?
Uh-uh, no, this one would be through the city.
Okay.
But it would follow much the same process as MCOOP.
Okay, thank you.
I had a comment. We uh, worked with MCOOP maybe like 15 years ago now for a neighborhood stabilization-type grant, and it was to be used for um, exterior improvements on the homes. And what we ran into was a lot of difficulty um, for the individuals being able to qualify. You know, they had to have um, their taxes paid up, their homeowner's insurance, and then they had to meet an income requirement. Is, is, is that much of the same requirements?
So it sounds that neighborhood stabilization program is a federal pro, program, much like HUD. Those are the same requirements that somebody has to meet in order to qualify for the fixed program. Uh, if we get awarded this grant, we'll have to look at how they uh, uh, make sure that people uh, are eligible for the funding, so. I don't have those answers yet in front of me, but we would have to see what, what sort of restrictions the state puts on the funds and make sure that uh, we're compliant as well as any applicants are compliant.
Yeah, just a heads up, because we ran into it a lot, and what, what we did was we had individuals who helped, like, a lot of the applicants were seniors, so they couldn't find things like their deeds, um, and different things like that. And so we had an agency come in and help assist individuals in the neighborhood to locate those type of uh, documents. Cause there's a lot of people, been there for generations, they don't have those documents anymore. So just to tell you, you might run into those type of situations.
Yeah, and we see this as an opportunity to complement our blight enforcement and our property maintenance enforcement. I think that was included in the fact sheet. As we're out uh, working on, or responding to complaints or requests uh, that we receive for property maintenance and blight, we'll be able to refer them and say, we've got this program that can help assist with some of the property maintenance concerns. Somebody may not be uh, able to, to meet, um, or have the feasibility or to be able to afford. But this would be a program that would be able to support them, and uh, certainly, you know, we never wanna take anybody to court or, or move past that enforcement phase, but we'll do all that we can to support someone through the application process to make sure that the improvements are made.
I definitely like the idea of that. Just, just a heads up, I wanted to give you on that.
Yeah.
Councilman?
I move to grant authorization for the Economic and Community Development Department to submit the Mishta Neighborhood Enhancement Program grant application and adopt a resolution of support.
Motion by uh, Councilwoman Vining, supported by Councilwoman Lamoore on item 4286, Authorization to Submit a Grant Application to Mishta Neighborhood Enhancement Program. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamoore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stilgrave? Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
So the next item, and I'm just gonna go in order of how they were received. So um, the first one was um, a decision regarding proposals already presented to city, to the city for 212 East Front Street.
Councilwoman Vining?
Yes, so uh, you know, we've been talking about this 212 uh, East Front Street for um, here recently for about the last couple council meetings. And I know that there were two proposals on the table um, presented to the city. And then, uh, of course, we pulled back, the administration pulled back, and well, at first they presented to us that they wanted to take these proposals further and do an RFP. So um, it was recently brought to our attention that um, we were gonna take, take a step back from the R, RFP. But what I got to thinking about is that those original people who made those proposals are still, um, still hadn't received any response, uh, nothing, um, you know, the courtesy or uh, professionalism of a yes or a no. So I've kind of been in a situation where I've, I've had a proposal out there, and um, you know, months passed, and I know it's uh, really frustrating and nerve-wracking. Um, also, I felt like it took out, um, we didn't really ever get to have a discussion as a council about who, if we were interested in, well, I don't feel, in my opinion, we didn't have the discussion about, out of those two proposals, which, which if any were we interested in and uh, making a deal with. And so I thought that if we were going to push back the uh, request for proposals, and, and we're gonna dig into um, how we uh, look into selling uh, or transferring properties in, in the near future here, that, that still leaves these two uh, these two companies who made this proposal on this building, that just still leaves them in limbo. So I thought that at this time, we should just give them a yes or a no. I don't think it's proper to leave them hanging out there. We if we're, if we're canceling those proposals or turning away from those proposals, isn't there a process that we should go through to uh, either accept or decline those proposals? And that's why I asked for this to be put back onto the, onto the agenda tonight. And then the, the second part of that, um, I don't know if you wanna have any discussion about that, um, the comments I just made, or do we move on to the council action from here?
Well, I, I think there's maybe other council members might, might wanna weigh in, or the administration may wanna weigh in before there's a motion made. Otherwise, we're making a motion, and then we're having a conversation after the motion. So I, I guess-
That's my thoughts on-
Yeah.
Why I asked that, that when I, when I didn't see, it's not on this agenda, but we've been talking about it the last, I'd say, five or six weeks, and um,
Well, I, I might ask administration, but maybe I'll recall what I heard. We, we've, we had three meetings, they were uh, work sessions, there were two proposals at the start. The administration didn't support either proposal in the first meeting, and uh, then we, as we talked through, there's a, the discussion of having it go out for a request for a proposal to see what uh, interest there may be. So what I'm hearing is you're saying that today is not, I, I, if that's, I guess I'm asking administration. Have, have we sent out the request for proposals, or are we going to send out the request for, for proposals?
At the last work session, I, I explained to the council that what my plan and what I was liking to have your support in doing is number one, I wanted to get two fair, unbiased market analysis on that property from, from a professional real estate company. We are in the process of receiving, now I've already received one that's unbiased, one that sometimes I have, have some, some, some considerations because they were connected to a previous person interested in the building. But um, but in my ask, I also said that I think we need to send out an RFP, a, a general RFP to go out, and, and, and being that we have had interest, we have not leveraged our abilities to reach out to the community as a whole, the, meaning the community regionally or statewide, of people that may be interested in this property and development of this property. And um, at that time, council made no actions to, to change that direction, didn't motion to put it on the ballot, or didn't motion to vote on it on the agenda, to make an action item. I did not feel it was important to reject either offer at this point, because I haven't been, uh, nobody from either one of the organizations have reached out to me and asked me to remove them, or let us know that they're no longer interested in purchasing that property with the proposal that they added. Now, with the release of the RFP, they too can also bid again or submit the proposal, or say, say that their proposal they won. That's their last best, best last offer, and that's for us to consider with the other proposals that we receive. I didn't feel that it was important to us to put this to where we have to terminate or a decision, or accept one of these officers by the, these offers by council action at a meeting until we've had a chance to do our due diligence. I still feel the same way, I might, I've been consistent throughout this entire process. I thought both bids from a business standpoint for the city business, and as it compares to our, our deed, uh, is our, is our master plan and the DDA's master plan, I don't think that they are a good business deal for the city. With that, at any point in time, council can make, make a, can make its own decision. This is just the recommendation from the administration to the council. I don't feel it's necessary, because at any point in time, either of the two people who drafted those proposals, had they wished to, to contact the administration and withdraw their offer, then we would, obviously, I'd be bringing that forth to you here to let you know that they have withdrawn their offer. That has not happened, and I don't know if that's what their intention is, and I don't know if that is what forcing this to a vote tonight would be, to say yes or no to one or, or both of these, these organizations. Because neither one of us asked me to do that, or to put that on the agenda.
Guess I should ask if there's other comments from council.
Yes, I have other comments.
Okay.
And so, the fact that if we're going to, if we're putting out an RFP- And so the fact that if we're going to, if we're putting out a RFP, then, um, it didn't show up on the agenda at this time. Um, if we're putting out RFP looking for more people to come in and see if they want to purchase the building, I, I think that we already had two proposals on the table, um, that we should have contacted them, not that they have to contact us again because they've been here for two or three meetings, um, you know, to asking that we make a decision on this. Also, we did a whole study, I, I don't know how much we spent on this study, but we did a entire study on that, on that building, what was it, just last year? Um, for the purpose of, uh, building a, potentially building a police station. So I would assume that we have all the information on that building that we would ever need. I, I don't know why we would need to do a, another market analysis on, on the building.
Well, the market analysis is actually, we, we have the taxable value of the building and we have the purchase price from the city that, that, when it was sold from the bank from that building, but we'd like to have a fair market analysis for a realtor, a professional real estate doing a market analysis, saying what this building is worth and what they recommend that would be a, a respectable, uh, price for that building. No different than if you were to sell your house, you, you just talk to a realtor, they come in and say, yeah, your house is worth this, I would ask this. It's the exact same, same process. It's, but it's, but it's a city owned building and, and I'd like to know what a professional real estate company who takes all those things into consideration tells us what a fair market value is.
So am, am I mistaken in assuming that we already received that information?
I've received one from an unbiased and it was anywhere between double the best offer, that between a half better and a double better than, than what we've been offered. So far on the, the one estimate I have from somebody not attached to the city or this property or anybody in this room, uh, it was between four hundred and six hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a, as a marketable sale price for that building. That's what I have so far.
Your honor.
Counselor?
Can I continue?
Sure, I have something to say too.
Okay. Wasn't our, wasn't it our own, our own department who assessed the, uh, value of that property? Um, can anybody in the room answer that question? Was that our own assess, assessor?
Our tax assessor taxes the tax, taxable value, which is separate from what the market value is.
So, so that's what, that's where I was at with it, your honor, is that we had two proposals come to us, um, both sounded pretty nice to me, but one was, you know, has a deep history in our, in our community and, um, meets from what I can tell, um, at the master plan, uh, you know, it's in the DDA plan and the master plan. Uh, and so, you know, I, I just, I just want a better understanding on what, what is it here that, that we're looking for, more money or, or?
So I guess I'll give my, my thoughts. So at the last, the last session, we had the work session and the discussion was whether or not there should be an RFP. And I know I asked more than once, is there any objection to the administration doing an RFP? And there was no responses. So if there's no objection, then that's given the direction to the administration to go out and do an RFP because it's a broader, um, I'll say, um, it's a broader perspective of what might be the highest and best use, but also it might be what the cost is. It might be what it is in, in relation to services to the community as a whole. I'm not saying that those that presented weren't, aren't going to meet some of those needs either. That's not what I'm saying. I, I believe that, you know, we, we received two proposals from, uh, two organizations to purchase the building. We didn't go out and solicit for that. It's, it's known that we own the building, we, it's known that we are, we're, um, looking to, um, uh, sell or move forward. But that doesn't mean there's not something that also might be considered if we don't ask. So I think that, um, the direction, at least I believe the administration got at the last work session was there was no objections for the administration to go out.
And thinking about, you know, what the people that were interested in the building had to say. And the, the one gentleman at, you know, at the end, he more or less said that he really wasn't interested in the building because a, a nonprofit was interested. And, um, you know, the, the nonprofit is established in Monroe. The, I didn't know until we had the meeting about some of the services that they provide and that they needed so much space. And probably because I've, you know, I'm not that involved in the Center for the Art. But, um, that was why that I wanted us to have a, a better discussion because when it comes to a nonprofit and someone that's established and if, and if we can help, I feel that we should, you know, talk about it and see if we can make a difference, you know? And if, uh, and if it's thought that we could get more money for the building and that's the direction that we want to go to, and that's what I thought the last time when we talked about the RFPs, that we were going to, we were more interested in getting, you know, the most that we could out of the building. And, um, I've always felt that Monroe, um, that we always went the extra mile to be able to help the nonprofits and the people that need it. So that's where I was at and that's why that I seconded this, uh, so we could have this discussion.
Other comments from council?
Thank you, your honor.
Um, I, I just want to make sure I'm right about this, but I, we are currently in the RFP process?
Yes, we, we've just, it was, went out today, correct? When, when did it go out?
Yeah, we're finalizing it.
Finalizing RFP, it's going to be going out just about there. And just for the record, we received another proposal on it today unsolicited.
And, and with that being said, it's, it's not something that would, uh, necessity for city council to vote on for us to basically come in and direct you, we, we already gave you the direction to go for the RFP, correct?
Yes.
So we're in the process of doing that, A, and B, um, it doesn't require us to make another decision to do something you're already doing. If you understand where I'm going with that.
What I think is, is being asked, if, if my impression is right, is, is council, councilwoman Vining is asking that we look particularly at the two that were presented and say yes or no now. And in my opinion, I'm still gathering the information, I'm still doing my due diligence because it is our taxpayers' money. It's none of our money here, it doesn't, it's not money that belongs to the nonprofit. And I wanted all the information to include those RFPs so that my recommendation to council represents all of our taxpayers, represents all of our, all of the plans that all of you have been part in creating the master plan and the, the master plan for the DDA, all of your work that has went into there, you're envisioning a certain type of business and that's why we, well, we invested this building because we wanted a police station and, and obviously I'm also looking at those plans too, to see if that's a feasible plan. But as I said beginning, I have no qualms about either organization that submitted their proposals. Other than the fact that as, from a business standpoint, they weren't sufficient for me to feel comfortable recommending to council that we act on one of those proposals because quite frankly, we are getting more action and it is our responsibility as, as, as a, as the keepers of our, of our taxpayers' money to spend it wisely and make sure we're investing it in the things that, that get the, i- if we continue in a path of giving things because it happens to be a nonprofit or, or something, if we give it away at a negative from a city financial standpoint, we are never going to be able to reinvest in, in the community development that we have worked so hard to try to, to stimulate within our city. And I was just simply asking for the time to gather all the information before we make any decisions. Because like I said, I have not been approached by either organization who has, has submitted proposals and asked to terminate them or asked to have it on the, the agenda for council to decide whether they're going to vote on it or not. They have not approached me. Now they may have approached some of you, but they have not approached me. And that's basically all's I can say from the administrative standpoint. I'm still in the process of gathering the best information and, and as you know, council, you can make a decision at any time and we obviously will follow your, your decisions.
Your honor.
Councilwoman Vining?
So, if I'm not mistaken, we were told that the RFP would be brought before the council either the last meeting or the meeting prior to that. Now you're saying we're in the process of developing an RFP. How long do you plan on holding off before you present it? Um, I'm trying to be careful in my words because sometimes I forget what we talk about in closed session and what we talk about in public and I don't want to be accused of, of any violations, but, um, you know, it's my understanding that the administration intends to wait sometime or not even put out a RFP at all. And then even if you do put out a RFP, it's not going to be just for this, uh, for this specific building. Um, as you said, the city owns a few buildings and, uh, I guess we, now we want to begin to market those buildings. I'm trying to make sure I'm understanding the administration, uh,
Well, I think I can straighten this out for you here pretty easy. When, when I reached out to council the, the last, and I misspoke in the council meeting saying that, that, because I, I was under the thinking that maybe we bring the RFP to you to actually approve before we went out. But then in talking to legal, et cetera, I realized that that's not a normal function of the council, that we put out RFPs. Council doesn't have to approve those. And on, and because I made that error, I made sure I communicated with every single council member, including yourself this week personally, and explained to you what the process is. We are putting out the RFP. We will most likely generate RFPs, separate RFPs because of the uniqueness of the, every other building that we have in the city, because they're unique in their own, in their own right and that's in, in different stages of development, whatever. So those are separate from this conversation. This RFP is going out. We have received, just because of the, this being in the paper, just because of, of other interests, word of mouth, et cetera, we have received in the last two weeks, I personally have received three personal, three calls to my office with parties interested in learning more about this building. We, we've let them all know, the beginning of this week, we are sending out an RFP, so be watching for the RFP. It'll be on our Facebook, it'll be on our social media, it'll be on Mitten, which is the, the official state of Michigan bid, bid, uh, site. And that's exactly where we're at. And, and I, and I thought I was, I was pretty concise and explanatory to, to all of you in my phone call. Um, but as I said, you are the city council, these are only my recommendations and the actions that I've taken based on your guidance and this is where we're at. I'm asking for time to be able to bring those RFPs to us before we make a decision on what is the best use and the best, uh, for that site. And then that'll be your decision at that point.
Your honor. Counselwoman Lamore?
If I may, uh, I just want to interject this as well. Uh, at the, at the last meeting, I believe you, you did give us a timeline and the timeline was approximately late, late November at the earliest, uh, beginning of next year at the latest, as to getting some kind of a, uh, result on the RFPs. So that's, that's kind of the way I understood it. Correct me if I'm wrong. It would be around late November, early next year before we'd have some kind of an idea of what we were going to get from the RFPs. And that was kind of where I understood we left it at, that the RFP was going to go through, you didn't need our approval to do it, and that's kind of my understanding as well, was that it was in the process and we're just now waiting for that process to finish.
Counselwoman Vining?
Yeah, I have another, um, concern about the RFP. You said that you want to put it out on, on Mitten. Um, what about any real estate, um, portals or would you, would you be putting it out on, on like regular reali, like are we, are we, I was,
We wouldn't hire a realtor to do this because then we would be paying the realtor commission to do this.
You said you would or you would not?
We, we aren't looking for someone to advocate selling it for this when we have our own abilities through our RFP process, our own marketing through our social medias and, and our, our website, as well as being on Mitten, that are open to government entities to be able to advertise for things like this. It's, they don't normally go through a real estate agent to do these things.
So would you want, um, these groups, uh, that originally came here that started this whole conversation, would, would you want them to, uh, reapply whenever you decide to put out an RFP?
Well, the RFP will be out. They can, they, they've already submitted proposals. Those proposals will be considered with the other proposals through the RFP process. They've already submitted it. So if they choose to resubmit, they're more than welcome to, if, if they choose to resubmit. But they have not communicated with the administration on their desires, so I assumed that they're not willing to withdraw their offers because they have had that option all along as well.
Well, they, they did stand in council chambers and say that they would have to move on, you know, at some point if a decision wasn't made, which is another reason why I thought it was important that, that we make some type of decision. I mean, I would assume that if you got two proposals and, and, and then you put out a RFP, if I was the potential buyer, I would assume that you weren't interested in my proposal. So I don't know why we didn't, why don't we just say that, that we're not interested in it? I'm trying to figure out as council, because you said that you don't need council's approval to do a RFP, but that we are not in the habit of doing RFPs for transference of, uh, city, uh, property, but we're gonna, we're gonna start that now, um, before we even develop, um, a process for how we're going to do this from here on out. So I just, I'm curi, and, and, and neither of these, uh, companies have reached out to me for the record. I'm, I'm speaking as a council person because I've been confused by the whole process. So if we're going to begin to do RFPs, uh, for these type of things, you know, he, moving forward, you know, I'd be interested when we get to that process to, to figure out how we're going to do that. So it doesn't look like we're just, uh, administration is just willy nilly deciding when they want to do a, a RFP and, and when they don't, you know? So I'm just, uh, I was confused on the process, um, you know? I'm a lay per, I'm a lay person in, in, in the, you know, as far as expertise goes, but it just seems to me that if, if an offer is made and we spent two or three meetings communicating back and forth with the, with the companies who made the proposals, that we need to let them know if we don't want to, if, you know, either, yeah, we, we, we're gonna accept your offer or we're gonna decline your offer.
So I think we've had discussion, I think it's understood what the, uh, request for having this on the agenda for, I think we understand as a conversation in the past meetings, my understanding was that the administration was going to move forward with an RFP. I understand that's the processes in, 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 in the works. Uh, I understand the manager, from what I've heard, has had conversation with each of the council members doing by and what that process was be. So I'm ready to see if there's a motion unless there's other comments further. Councilwoman, do you have a motion of a preference of?
Yes, I had a preference, um, and I'd like to make a motion that, uh, we accept the offer from the RRCA, uh, for the purchase of two twelve East Front Street.
Is there a mount, is there, um, timeframe or just by their proposal?
According to the proposals and the discussions that, that we initially had. According to the proposals and the discussions that, that we initially had, yes. The second one, because it's my understanding that it changed after we.
The latest proposal.
The last proposal, yes, sir.
There's a motion from Councilwoman Vining that the city council approve, if I'm, well, accept the proposal from the RRCA regarding the purchase of 212 East Front Street for the amount in which was our latest proposal. Is that correct, Councilwoman?
Yes, your honor.
Okay.
Your honor, may I make a quick comment?
I have a comment to make before we vote. I just want to see if there was a second, if I'm going to make the comment or not.
On that motion, my only request from a legal perspective would be because we had that out, there's a proposal and we had not had back and forth on the specific terms that that be subject to final approval through my office of any, I'll say minor modifications. I realize that the, the motion is to proceed forward with the amount. There may be some things in their proposal in terms of timing now and things that we have to work out. So with minor modifications by the city attorney's office, if that's okay to the council.
Yes, sir, Mr. City Attorney, I agree with that, your honor.
Do you? Okay, city attorney, you. There's a motion on the floor, requires a second. Okay, now we have a motion and a second. Any final comments? Obviously Councilman Felder, you know, near his position. So I think this is a long process that requires all aspects to be reviewed. I'm not going to support this motion. And I think there was opportunity to have the conversation without getting to this point and having a motion that's not on the agenda, that was put on the agenda to be able to have the conversation. I think that, that it is not reflective of the two entities that apply. That's not my position. My position is we don't know what the value is for the city and the residents and our base. I don't know what other proposals may be there that might find a different use. We heard the conversations, we heard the support, and I, I understand that. But it's, and the, the proposal speaks to the RRCA, which has an issue, has a need for space. But the emergency of the need that they have doesn't mean we should be making a decision until we have all the information. I'm not prepared at this point to accept would have been either one of them at this point, because I think there's more to be learned. If there's not any other comments?
Your honor.
Sure, go ahead. It's your motion and second.
Well, my final comment, which.
If you want to debate it, I'll be glad to, but go ahead.
Well, you know, the building's just been sitting there, you know? Of course, the people own the building, so we're not collecting taxes off of it anyway. So, you know, there were, there was no, I just didn't see any urgency about the building until after the proposals were made. How much longer was the building what, gonna sit there empty? You know, who knows, you know? But it was all just a bit confusing to me, you know, the way the whole, and then, and then I'll just say this, and you know, I don't mean any disrespect, but you know, of course, you don't need the council to, to, to do RFPs, but we're, when we're involved in, in these type of conversations and, and we have to vote on these type of things, I mean, you know, it'd be wise to, you know, include the council, especially where it applies to our economic development. I want in community development, there's no reason that, you know, and I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody in particular, but I don't think we need to try to go around the council. I don't think it's wise. And, and then I think that I want to finally say one thing that we always, we have talked about in the past is developing our arts and culture in, in the downtown area. And I, you know, I just think that Riverais and Center for the Arts is deeply ingrained in that decades of history and bringing people into the, into the downtown area, which goes along with our master plan and the DDA's plan, that portion of, of the arts and culture. And I'm not going to say anymore. Thank you, your honor.
Well, you, I have to say, you know, I'm kind of full perspective person. I like to know when there's a comment made, it's got to take in consideration the other side. Councilwoman, you said that it's currently sitting there, we own it, it's not taxable. We sell it, it's not going to be taxable. Since you raised the question, I'll just give you the answer. So, well, that's not the only thing to consider. I think we do support the arts in our community and we have it in our goals and objectives. I think probably individually, we support those items as well. But I have to take my position here as an elected official for the city and how are we going to continue to move forward? There's a motion and a second.
Can I make a comment?
Councilwoman Germaine, and then we'll take the vote.
Thank you. My opinion is I think we should let the process be fulfilled. Nothing against the two proposals, they're both still on the table. I just think we need to let it, let it all fold out before we make a decision. That's how I feel.
That said, clerk, Mr. Bud, you have a follow up?
The only thing I just wanted to say, because there's some dynamics with the abstention and whatnot, that this is the sale of city owned property. So a two thirds vote of the total number of council members would be necessary for it to be approved.
Correct. Yep, understand. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
No.
Lamore?
No.
Felder?
Abstain.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stilgrave?
No.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
No.
4-2. Next item?
Please call, next item.
Item 4287, which was from the consent agenda, item two, I mean, 202324 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Program Bid Award.
Councilman Felder?
Thank you, sir. I promise I didn't pull this item to put Director Leroy through his paces. I think it's an important item, it's a large amount, and I think that there's good news here. We seem to have an enormous savings as part of this project. I was going through and. Did you say something? I'm sorry. Okay. I think it is a, is a large project and I wanted to get, first of all, give it the attention that it deserves. Second of all, acknowledge it is a win. And then third of all, I did have a, more of a technical question regarding, what, what was it? CIPP, cured in place pipe. Is this a liner that's put through existing pipes to lengthen the, the durability of existing infrastructure to minimize cost? That's, it is what I think it is.
Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Gotcha. I, I just, I wanted to acknowledge the, the savings in, in terms of how the, the bid amount that we received was below what the estimate was. And, you know, it, it's nice to count your wins when you can have them, and especially for a bid that was for such a large amount. I just wanted to give some recognition to the department for making that happen, so.
Very good.
With that, unless there's any other comments, sir?
I don't see any.
I'd like to make a motion that the contract for the 202324 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Program be awarded to Performance Pipelining Incorporated in the amount of $739,044 and that a total of $850,000 be encumbered to include a 15% contingency. And that the mayor and clerk treasurer be authorized to execute the contracts on behalf of the city and that the director of finance be authorized to set up any necessary accounts and make any necessary budget amendments.
Second. Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lamore, item 4287, the 202324 Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Program Bid Award. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stilgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
I have no further items.
Councilwoman Germaine?
Last weekend, even though it was a horrible weather weekend, we did have some very nice events going around town. The fire station had their open house and it was very well attended and all the kids and adults were enjoying themselves. And thanks to Scallywags, the Bark in the Park got relocated to Scallywags instead of the park. And I went down there and there must have been 50 dogs and owners dressed up and they had a great time. The store was packed and it brought out a lot of people, even in that pouring rain and cold wind. And I wanted to tell everybody to have a safe Halloween celebration, no matter what you're doing. That's all, your honor.
Lamore?
Thank you, your honor. Please be safe for Halloween. That's all I have for comments.
Felder?
No comments, your honor.
Councilwoman Whitman?
I have no comments. Thank you.
Councilwoman Stilgrave?
Thank you, your honor. First of all, I want to extend my sympathies to the McCormick family. Mr. McCormick, his funeral was today. Also, there will be a, this is for next week, a chili cookoff for the Exchange Club at the Michigan Wine and Beer Portal on October 26th. And that should be a pretty good event. And then on October 27th, on Friday, starting at 6:00 PM, it's called the Booze and Booze. It's downtown Monroe in our social district area. And all the bars and restaurants will be involved in that. And you can dress up, there will be prizes and should be a pretty fun event. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining?
The open house at the, at the fire station one was really nice. When, when the fire marshal was here, I, I never thought about the fact I never had the opportunity, thank God, to use a fire extinguisher. So that was a, that was a good learning experience. They had the kids out there putting out a fire in a little miniature house and some other things. But it, it was really informative for the community, so I appreciated that. I'm, I'm excited about the Spark Grant. So the, the portion about the fence to go around the Selma Rankin's Community Garden, which is in its ninth harvest season. And this year we gave, gave away over 1,800 pounds of fresh produce and we had over 60 regular participants. I'm sure there's more, but I couldn't keep count of people who were just in the garden picking and we didn't get a chance to weigh the produce. But it's a labor of love, the Selma Rankin's Community Garden. And I think that the garden is just going, the fence is just going to help, help us grow even more and keep better track of what we're growing and what we're giving away. So I'm really excited about that upcoming grant. Caitlin, thank you.
Thank you. A couple upcoming events that I would like to speak about, the Downtown Monroe Business Network, the DMBN has their trick or treat in the downtown on Saturday, October 28th. It begins at 10 o'clock in the morning. I didn't see an end time, but I know that it's many, many attendees and children and all dressed up. It's a great event for the downtown, so I thank them. Second, the MCOP Walk for Warmth is Saturday, November 4th at 9:30 AM to 11:00 AM. It'll be at the Monroe Township, Monroe Charter Township Nature Trail, they're behind the Township Hall. And last item I have is, because it's been ongoing within our community, the MDOT is returning for a public meeting regarding the interchange program and the Pell process and some recommendations regarding I-75 and the Front Street and Elm Avenue's impacts, as well as the, the bridge over the river. That meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 1st, 6 to 8:00 PM at the Riverais National Battlefield Park Education Center on Dixie, the same as what they had held the past meet. I think this is the fourth public meeting. I know they had at the Opportunity Center, at the LCC, they had some other community engagement, but the date again is November 1st, public meeting. So if those that were interested before, or maybe now, may want to attend. That's all I have. Clerk Treasurer?
I just have a quick item. I, we had a successful mobile clerk treasurer's office this afternoon at the Opportunity Center. It was, it was good. And we plan to be there again in November and December and hopefully expand it to a few other places throughout the community before the end of the year. In addition to that, it just, it was, it was a great opportunity because sometimes when you're out there is when new ideas come about. And so we had a conversation of a couple of potential new initiatives that I'll be talking about in November, that, that I think would be good for the entire Monroe City community surrounding elections and things like that. And then finally, just a reminder that absentee ballots are still available to be issued. And I would, I would really encourage you to follow the newspaper and the website because we will announce all of the times that we're open, different hours, extended hours, et cetera, to help serve you with elections. So just keep checking that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Manager Robinson, comments?
I have no comments.
Next is citizens' comments. If there's those present that wish to have a comment, just be mindful of the chambers, three minutes, please. State your name and residence of, or jurisdiction of residence. Yes, sir.
Mike Trapp, Executive Director of the Riverais and Center for the Arts. I just want to say thank you for your time and consideration. Two weeks ago, I did ask you to take a vote on this. I'm sorry you missed that, Mr. Robinson. And, and you did, and I appreciate that. We know where we stand. We will try and submit another RFP if we get the chance. But I know this was a hard decision and you had to take a lot of consideration into it. Councilwoman Vining, thank you for bringing it up and thank all of you for your consideration. We do appreciate that. And we're going to move on and do more great things. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from those present here this evening? Other comments? No comments? Motion to adjourn. Motion by Councilwoman Lamore, supported by Councilwoman Germaine to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Germaine?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Whitman?
Yes.
Stilgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes, thank you.